To the flag. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting to interview applicants for the vacancy on the Board of Education. There is no public comment period at this meeting. In light of a board member's resignation effective October 17th, 2016, the Board of Education developed a timeline to fill the vacancy. In a central school district, school boards may fill a vacancy by appointment with the appointees serving until the next election, which is on May 16th, 2017. Below is the process implemented to fill the vacancy as approved by the Board on October 24th, 2016. October 24th through November 4th, 2016 at 5:00 PM, we accepted letters of interest from community members to serve on the Board. Letters of interest were sent to the district clerk. The district clerk advertised the vacancy in all appropriate media sources. This evening, November 9th, 2016, the Board of Education has convened a special meeting, open session, to interview individuals who submitted a letter of interest. On November 28th, 2016, or as soon as deemed appropriate by the Board of Education, the Board will vote on the appointment and the district clerk will administer the oath of office and code of ethics to the appointee. The appointee shall be afforded all the powers and duties of a board member upon appointment. The board appointee shall hold office until the results of the annual election for board members are declared on May 17th, 2017. There are six applicants who have applied for this vacancy. They are seated in the order in which their applications were submitted. I will now turn over the interview process to the moderator, Mr. Darren Loquima. There will be no questions or comments from either the Board or the public.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, applicants, and audience members. Once again, my name is Darren Loquima. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Compliance and Information Systems, and I will be acting as the moderator for this evening's interviews. As already stated, the applicants are seated in the order in which their applications were received, and we want to take a moment to go ahead and welcome our applicants. So please, as I call your names, just stand up. First, we have Mrs. Deborah Torres Henning, Mrs. Diana Farrar, Mr. Gary Beaumont, Mr. Babu Munusami, Mrs. Cheryl Miggitts, and Mr. Emmanuel Marinaro. Thank you very much. So tonight, applicants will be asked a series of six questions. The six questions were submitted by the Board of Education, and everyone will have a chance to answer the same question in order. But everyone will have a chance to answer one of the six questions first. So it will be the first responder to at least one question tonight. And then, once again, in that order, so we're going to have one question at a time, everyone has a chance to answer, then the next, and so forth. So I'll be asking the questions, and every applicant has two minutes to answer. When we get to a 30-second warning mark, Mrs. Crandall will hold up a sign saying we have 30 seconds, and at the end of two minutes, a beeper will go off. You'll get very used to that sound, and we'll be asking you to please conclude your response at that time. There will be no follow-up questions, so the questions are as written. I can repeat the question, but I can't clarify them. Okay? And so at this point in time, we also ask that our audience members silence their cellphones in respect for everyone's response, and remain silent. There will be no cheers, applause, or outbursts tolerated. Thank you. So the first question goes to Mrs. Torres Henning, and then once again, you have two minutes to respond. Can you please give us a brief description of your background, and can you describe the qualities you possess which will enable you to have a positive influence on education?
I've been a resident of Wapinjers for 11 years. I have four children that have gone through the school system. Currently, I have one in high school, one in junior high, one in elementary, and one who's an NYPD officer. I have a special needs child. I have run for the Board before and came very, very close to getting on. I have worked with senators, assemblymen, legislators, town councilmen, trying to get to a fair situation in our education reform that we have going on now. I'm very much against Common Core. I'd like to see it gone. I'd like to see us replace it with something that's fair for the children. I'd like to see us get back to local control. I understand what's going on in the community. I understand what the children's needs are, and I would really like to fill in that void that you have right now on the Board and lend what I know and what I can do, especially being a liaison to the legislature in Albany. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Farrar, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Can you give us a brief description of your background, and can you describe the qualities you possess which will enable you to have a positive influence on education?
I have been in education for over 25 years. I went to the Juilliard School. I also went to John Jay High School, and I was the second graduating class. My daughter graduated in 2000, and she holds a doctorate in athletic training, and she also is a professor at Salem State University. So I was involved with everything, and she was involved in music as well. I'm a music teacher in the city of Poughkeepsie, and currently also the Preservance Coordinator for Student Teachers. I work highly with Dr. Ronald Cook Jr., who was the Deputy Superintendent of Operations, and my whole honest going back to graduate school to go into superintendency and understand how and why we need to do things for our kids. So as America is growing and as America is moving forward, education changes all the time, and we have to be in the forefront of this so that we can take reins and do what we need to do in collaboration with everyone here, including the stakeholders in the community, so that we are all together on the same page, working together for the needs of our children. And I feel that I have tremendous qualifications. I sing in several languages. I do a lot, and I'm still involved in community things so that I see many things happening, and I want to be part of a positive change.
Mr. Beaumont, do you need me to repeat the question?
No. My name is Gary Beaumont. I have four children, five grandchildren. None have ever attended Wapinjers District. I've lived here in the district for approximately 22 years. I am a retired police detective. I was a patrol officer, motorcycle officer, and detective for 34 years. I retired six years ago. I have been a volunteer fireman for the last 44 years. I am a -- serving right now as Vice President of New Hack, Sac Fire Company. I'm a life member. I've been past president. My wife's a schoolteacher in the district. My daughter is a schoolteacher in the district. I have many friends who are schoolteachers in the district. I have -- I'd like to make an impact, if I could make one impact in a child's life as a school board member, that would satisfy me because that's what I would be wanting to do. I try to get along with everybody, but 34 years as a policeman, I learned to get along with everybody whether we can or not. But as you can see, I have very community service-related relations. I've been a volunteer fire investigator for Dutchess County for the last 15 years, and even though I'm a retired policeman, I continually train as a fire investigator, as a volunteer fireman. So I do a lot of research. I look at things. I analyze. I don't make hasty decisions unless it's life or death. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont. Mr. Munusami.
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good. Thank you. First of all, I just want to say sorry for being late, and I was at the wrong school. And I saw that you said junior high school. I thought about my son's side, where he went to junior high school, Van Wyck. Anyway, why do I want to be a board member? I have a great educational background. I have three degrees from three different continents, and my parents were high school, not even high school, elementary school dropouts. I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Sorry, thanks. My parents were elementary school dropouts, but they encouraged me to get a great education, and they taught us that is the importance in our life. And that's what it made me to come to the U.S., and I'm doing well here. And I have one child. He goes to Wapinjers School District. He's in high school now, and he's a freshman. Whatever I provide, whatever I learned from my parents, the importance of education, that's what I'm providing to my son, and that's what I want to contribute to the community. That's why I want to run for the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Munusami. Mrs. Miggitts.
I don't need the question repeated. Thank you. Hello, my name is Cheryl Miggitts. I come from a background of education. I have taught both on the high school level in Pennsylvania and on the college level. I have taken 16 years off from working to raise my children when they were young, and I have just recently returned as an adjunct instructor at Dutchess Community College. I have two children in the district, both now at Royce Ketchum High School. Over the years that they have been in the district, they have attended, and I have been involved in activities at five district schools and one out-of-district school. My children have been educated in honors classes, general education classes, integrated co-teaching classes, self-contained classes, and once-for-two-years in-and-out-of-district programs. So I really have a background in understanding of the range of educational experiences that our districts offer and what parents experience in each of those settings. I also come from a strong background of volunteerism. I have volunteered in the schools, everything from doing literacy lounge at Sheaf Road Elementary for six years to serving as PTA president here in Wapinjers Junior High for two years, serving as Secretary of the Wapinjers PTA Council. I have also -- well, I currently serve on the Smart Schools Bond Act Committee, and I have also been tapped to serve on interview committees for many of the administrative positions in the district. In fact, I think I've interviewed or been asked to interview just about every one of the top administrators who've been brought in in the last five years. And let's see, the qualities that I bring?
Thank you, Mrs. Miggitts. Mr. Marinaro.
Good evening, all, everybody. My background as a resident of Wapinjers, I have lived in the community for about 12 to 15 years. I have raised two children in these communities. They both went to our local schools. They graduated from John Jay. My daughter right now is attending college in Connecticut. My son attended two-year college in Dutchess Community. I am a business owner in the community for the longest time, for over 20 years, locally in the restaurant business. The reason I want to join and volunteer in the Board of Trustees of Wapinjers is because this community and this country has been very good to me, and I feel that I need to give something back to the community. The community needs a voice on the Board from a business owner to actually address some of the needs from the business community. I'm in touch with the community on a daily basis, and so I think that I will bring the voice of the community to the Board and possibly some good advice for the Board and for the school district as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question two, and we'll start this time with Miss Farrar. How do you see your role as part of a Board working for the good of the school district?
There are many challenges that we face in education. As education is constantly on the move, there are, as well as the school laws, that are constantly changing and being tested. And to be on the Board and to be able to be and sit and work with everyone, this is not easy. It's a not-easy job. It's a tough job, but we need to do it together. We have to agree to disagree, and we need to keep ourselves focused so that we can get through and do what we need to do for the good of the district, the teachers, the staff, and of course, all the children.
Thank you. Mr. Beaumont, how do you see your role as part of a Board working for the good of the school district?
Well, I would try to do the best I can to improve the district, to better educate the children, get the supplies that they need, the tools, the resources the children need. I would like to -- truthfully, build new schools. Some of the schools are getting too old. So as a board member, I would try to work with the Board. Maybe we can get a possibility of new school buildings or update what we have now because I personally agree some of them are in pretty deplorable condition. And as a board member, I would attempt to work with the Board to get our schools built back up the way they should be, get our children the proper tools for education. I mean, I look at some of the classrooms I've been into since my wife's a teacher and my daughter is a teacher, and broken desks, broken chairs. I'd like to see money spent on our children. I mean, I pay a lot of taxes. I pay over $9,000 a year school tax. I have never had a child in this district because my children were all grown, and I'd like to see some of that money spent on our children first. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Munusami.
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, sir. Thank you. Our goal should be, the first goal should be the children. That's our primary. We put children first, and everything else is around it. That's pretty much what the school district Board does. So what are, where is this country now in education-wise? Where do we stand? Where were we, and where are we now? And how do we make the school district better from where we are now? I was looking at the statistical data, and 2016, U.S. News and all that. It says our AP enrollment in high school is only about 20, sorry, 16%. That's pretty enrollment to the AP's classes. That's pretty low. And we look at, as a whole, we talk about STEM. If we don't have enough kids understanding the importance of STEM, how are we going to make our school, our state, our nation better? So our role as a board member should be making the kids aware of the importance of the education, the benefits, and also, as a board member, direct the administration, giving advices, looking at the programs, curriculum, what's best for the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Munusami. Mrs. Miggitts.
Well, one concern that I have is that I keep hearing in the community that while we've worked on it, we need to improve communication between the Board and the district with the community in general. That's something that I would like to work toward, but absolutely, the priority is the children and the education that we're giving them. We need to prepare them to be able to go out into the world and be self-sufficient and provide for their own families as they build them. I'm in a position right now, teaching at Dutchess. I teach three sections of freshmen every day. Among my students, I have graduates of all three high schools in the district. And through my interactions with them and other students on campus, I see how well we have done preparing them for college and career readiness. I truly have an understanding of what that means because I deal with it on a daily basis, trying to take my students from where they are and get them to where they need to be to go on to the next level. I also understand that after last night's election, there may be some changes coming for education in the United States, as the President-elect has talked about making changes to the Department of Education and the Common Core learning standards. I have an understanding of the standards, and I know what's there. I know what I would like to see there if more control is returned to the local level. But really, I think the emphasis is on actually providing our students from gifted teachers in our district with what they need to be able to go on and succeed.
Thank you, Mrs. Miggitts. Mr. Marinaro.
Yeah, do you mind repeating the question again?
Absolutely. How do you see your role as part of a Board working for the good of the school district?
Well, again, I'm a simple person. I strongly believe that education belongs mainly as a decision for the parent, for the community. The parents should be really involved with the decision-making of how we educate the kids. I've been in the school system myself many years ago, graduating, and I see there is a big change in the way we're educating the children today compared to what I received when I was in the same type of school environment. It is important, and I will bring this perspective, of transparency to the Board, communicating with the community. I think it's extremely important when a Board wants to put a plan in action that there is that communication with the community and trying to get the support from the parents, working together with the teachers, and ultimately, beneficiary of this process will be the schoolchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marinaro. Mrs. Torres Henning, same question.
Well, I already play a role in the Board because I attend BOE meetings regularly, and I participate in two committees right now, the Legislative Action Committee and the Communications Committee. And I have to say, I'm not shy about having and voicing a dissenting opinion. And I think that it behooves the Board to have a dissenting opinion because if everybody agrees and everybody's going lockstep to the same drummer, there's not going to be any pushback, there's not going to be any feedback, and you need to know the feedback from the community. And I can bridge that gap and bring you what the community is asking for. As everybody else has said, of course, the first and primary focus of the school Board should be the children. And the first questions I would ask when we have to deliberate something on the Board is, how does this benefit the children? And how are the children? I write letters. I write letters to the Board. I write letters to senators, assemblymen, as I mentioned before. And I've already affected change in the district by getting the policy changed several years ago regarding physicals, school physicals. I think that we can work together. I think listening to each other, even when we don't agree, is workable. It's doable. I'll work with you if you work with me. And that's where I see my role in working in a group such as the BOE.
Thank you, Mrs. Torres Henning. Mr. Beaumont, you will begin question three. As a potential Board member, who do you consider to be your supporters, and what role will you play in representing them should you be appointed? Would you like me to repeat that?
Who would be my supporters?
Yeah, allow me to repeat the question. As a potential Board member, who do you consider to be your supporters, and what role will you play in representing them should you be appointed?
Well, I would hope the children would support me, but I would request the support of all the school district employees, from the custodians up to the teachers. I would want to work with them, have an open ear to listen to whatever questions, complaints they have, and as a school board member, I would attempt to rectify whatever the issues are. If a child or a teacher came to me and had a special request about something, I would listen to them. I wouldn't brush them off. I mean, as a police officer for 34 years, I worked many, many days and hours with our youth officers division. And I understand children. I mean, I do have four, but they're all grown, and five grandchildren now. And I would never turn anybody away. I would listen to any question, anything, and go to the school Board and bring it up. I'm not shy. That's one thing about me. Something is on my mind, I will bring it up, and if I feel I'm right, I will fight. And if you feel that I'm not right, you have to prove that I'm wrong, or else I am right. And I'm not, like I said, I'm not shy. I'll argue with anybody. And at the end of the night, we'll go have coffee together because I don't hold animosity against anybody. But I will do the best I could if I was a school board member to listen to any complaints, any issues, anything from anybody, a parent, a teacher, a child, an employee, to rectify any problems that occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont. Mr. Munusami.
My main supporters I would look for is the community, teachers, and the other board members, parents. As a board member, if we come up with a program or a policy, we definitely need a support from the community because we are the representatives of the community. And what kind of role would I play as a board member? When the policy is proposed, our program, we have to make sure it aligns with our mission of the Central Board School. And also, it's for the benefit of the children, and also make sure that it complies with laws. And it benefits, basically, it benefits all, and and provide the advice to the administration to implement the policy for the best for the kids. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munusami. Mrs. Miggitts.
I'm also not a shy person, and with all of the activities I've been involved in through the district, I know a lot of people from a lot of stakeholder groups in the community. Many of you know that I have approached you and spoken to you about ideas and concerns that I have had. Same thing with central administration, with teachers in the buildings where my children have attended, everybody down to, I know the custodians in the schools where my children have attended. I know the secretaries. I know the monitors. I know the bus drivers that my children have had, and I'm very involved in discussions about issues that face our community through social media and issues that face our community through social media and through discussions with parents at community activities. And my commitment would be to bring forward any of the opinions that others might not get to hear that come from any of those constituencies. And I really don't want to just give lip service to them. I want to actually bring them forward and have them heard. I believe that a board member needs to have both a heart and logic. And some of the concerns that parents and community members come to us with are things that either hurt them very deeply or cause them or their children great amounts of concern and anxiety. And I want to make sure that they are actually listened to, not just given a nod and passed on, but that the decisions are made through looking at all points of view and logic and that any decision that I would vote for would be in the best interest of the students, even if some of the members of the community might disagree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miggitts. Mr. Marinaro.
Well, some of the supporters would be definitely the community members. The taxpayers would be the seniors, the parents of the, the parents of our children, and of course, the teachers. We need to really listen to what the community is addressing. I think I will be that person that will bring those concerns to the board. I daily talk to teachers. I, my business is next to, located next to Van Wyk Junior High School. I talk to the teachers. I talk to a lot of the staffers. We go over what's going on in the schools, what they need, what improvements. So I always am aware of what goes on in the schools and also in the communities. Again, the taxpayers have questions. Sometimes those questions aren't answered, and I would like to bring that to the board's attention because it is important to the community, not only how we educate the children, but the cost of education that goes with that. As a role and a board member, I will work very hard with the rest of the board in addressing all the issues that are important, not only for the children, the education, but also for the fiscal responsibility that goes with being a board member.
Thank you, Mr. Marinaro. Mrs. Torres Henning.
I would consider my supporters to be the parents and the children and the taxpayers. And I would represent them just as I've been representing them by fighting and doing what I've been doing for the past four years for them. I would make sure that transparency isn't just a buzzword and that we actually achieve transparency and not just give it lip service. We stand up at the beginning of each of these meetings and we say the pledge of allegiance to the flag. And I think we kind of forget that throughout the day, throughout the meetings. What is it really about? What do we want to do? How are we representing our country? How are we representing our schools? There's a lot of work to be done. And there's a lot of bridging gaps to be done. There, I think, you know, we could sit up here and make nice-nice, but there are problems between the board and the community and the parents. And we need to bridge that gap. And we need to get the communication open. We need to get transparency from the board. We need to have the parents and the taxpayers feel that they are part of the solution and that they are listened to. And that's what I would like to bring.
Thank you, Mrs. Torres Henning. Ms. Ferrara.
The supporters. First of all, we have our superintendent. That is who we collaborate with, and he is the leader, and we will work with him. But our supporters are not only the taxpayers, but all the teachers' unions, the principals' unions, everybody that's involved in the district, including, and of course, the children and the parents. And we must be mindful of this. So when we make decisions, decisions have to be made with a thoughtful, thoughtful process and with great collaboration. It can't be one-sided all the time. It has to be, has to be opened. And I feel that that's a need that we always must have so that we see both sides of the coin, so that we can make proper decisions and correct decisions. But we have a diverse community, and different ethnic groups have different feelings about certain things. And we need to be aware of these things and be able to answer their questions, honor their needs if necessary, be there for their children at all times because that's what we do. We have, there's, like I said, the TAs, the unions from all over, from the top down. We all have to be aware of their needs and what we can do to improve the district on several levels, like I said. And also the other, other board members. When we work together, we work together to make things and improve.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrara. Mr. Munusami, you will begin question number four. What do you think the Wapenter Central School District does especially well, and where do you think we need to improve? Would you like me to repeat that?
Please.
What do you think the Wapenter School District does especially well, and where do you think we need to improve?
Thank you. As some people say that taxes are pretty high, but compared to some other school districts, and then, we're not that bad. We are actually doing well. And also, of course, there's always, we need an improvement anywhere you look at it, either at home, our school, our state, our nation. Yes, definitely, we, our school districts, you know, can use some help in improving the education. Like I said earlier, we got to get the kids ready for the college. As my neighbor here, she mentioned about the college readiness. I looked at the data. It said we are ready only about 20%. That's pretty low. The kids are, you know, our school district college readiness is very low compared to our neighbors, Spackenkill or Arlington. Our says, I think I wrote it down, 27%. That's what it says, compared to 50%. Some of the schools have, school districts have 50% college readiness. So we have to empower our teachers, make our, the community aware of what needs to be done to make these kids ready for the future. And also, kids, get them involved and get them interested in understanding the purpose of all this latest technology. STEM is the key word, buzzword here, and we have to make them aware, this is what's going to help you to have a better life in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munusami. Mrs. Miggitts.
There are a number of things that our district does well. I'm especially proud of the achievement of the students that we have participating in music, the arts, drama, and the things that they add to the community. We have wonderful teachers in the district who, from the elementary level, share their empathy with and enthusiasm with the students through teachers, through the middle and high school level, who are willing to give up of their own time to meet with students who are struggling or have questions. Those support systems are wonderful. However, one of the things that I see is that there's a difference between the minimum graduation requirements the state sets and what our students actually need to be ready to go into college and careers. I mentioned before that I'm teaching three sections at Dutchess this year. They happen to be three remedial sections. They're three sections where I'm teaching students who did not get the skills that they needed in high school to be able to go into the 100-level English and math classes. And I think that we owe it to our students to let them know that just because the state says you only need three years of math does not mean that you can, you'll be able to go into a credit-bearing college classroom having taken Algebra I and Financial Math and Geometry, that you're going to be behind the eight ball going in. I also think that we need to make the parent workshops that we hold relevant to parents. I've been hearing from the community that we need more information for parents who are preparing students for college, particularly if the family has no background of going to college, letting them know what students need to know and what the process is. And I also believe we need to improve communication, collaboration with the community to solve our problems, facilities so that our students can learn and also be safe on the athletic fields and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miggitts. Mr. Marinaro.
Yeah. What I think the school district does a great and an extreme great job is in the sports and the extracurricular activity, the arts. I think that I've attended quite a few events. I mean, my son, when he was in school, was participating in the sports. Great, great, great programs. As far as the needs, they need to be improved. I'm not an educator, but I'm a parent. And what I feel is that we are graduating kids that are now ready to do what the society needs them to do, whether they want to go to college or whether they want to go to, in a field to, to be ready for a job. I would like to see more vocational training classes. We listen to today's political arena, and they're saying that we fell behind. We need to prepare these kids so that they can make a choice. I don't think that we should prepare everybody to go to college. That was a mistake. We're paying a high price for that as a society. But I know for a fact that you can't find a plumber, you can't find a mechanic. You drive around our neighborhoods and people have job openings, but we do not have qualified kids that could enter that field. So I would like to really see an improvement in the Wapenter School District regarding vocational classes.
Thank you, Mr. Marinaro. Mrs. Torres Henning.
I agree. We have some really great programs in the Wapenters community. We have some really great teachers. Van Wyk is stellar. I was sorry to see the sixth grade go with the redistricting. Still doing well, great school. But I think there are, there are more improvements that need to be made than, you know, all the nice, warm, fuzzy moments here. I do agree with Mr. Marinaro, there needs to be more preparation and trade schools. We also need to push for multiple pathways to graduate, especially for our special needs kids. That is of utmost importance. How can you expect a special needs child with an IEP to take five regents? It's ridiculous. We need to, we need to push back on the state. And speaking of the state, you know, I'll get to that in a minute. But one of the other things that this district does very well, but almost to its own detriment, is listens to the WCT union. They listen to the union very well, almost too well. So we need to focus on the children's needs, not so much the union's needs. And one other major improvement in the board would be by understanding that the board is not an extension of NICE ed and they're not employees of the state.
Thank you, Mrs. Torres Henning. Ms. Ferrara.
The strengths, of course, which were discussed already, the sports, the theater, the music programs, the curriculum, okay, constantly changing, and this professional development that continues so that the teachers are on board and know what's going on with the state requirements, which changes all the time. The science, history, the regis preparation, and, and the focus on instruction. These are positive things for the students and for the community, knowing that our kids are getting what they need. They are entitled to a high-quality education and should be college and career-ready. College and career-ready does not necessarily mean that they are going to go to college, but they have the tools so that they can explore and go on and become bona fide good citizens of our country and be able to contribute, which they need to do. But they need to have a good background and bones, background, you know, basis for all of this that they need. Let's see. I also feel that the teachers go out of their way. They do a lot, over and above, which they normally do. And it's, you know, even for the alternative school that you have, I understand, I've heard wonderful things about what goes on, and that's, that is an achievement itself because that's a tough, that's a tough thing because there are children with problems, and being able to work with these children so that they can be the best of the best is what we need to focus on.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrara. Mr. Beaumont.
Can you repeat the question?
Certainly. What do you think the Wapenter School District does especially well, and where do you think we need to improve?
Well, like everybody said, I believe the school district has a great sports intermurals. I don't know how much improvement you could do, but they seem to be pretty good now from what I've witnessed. I'd like to see more trade activities possibly in the schools. I don't know if you have shop anymore, but I'm an old-timer. When I got out of high school in 1971, I really enjoyed shop, mechanical drawing. I did go to college. I have two college degrees, but I would never force one of my children to go to college if they didn't want to. I told my children, do the best you can. If you want to go to college, I'll pay for it, which I did. One son went to college, and he is very happy being a plumber. He has a very good salary as a plumber. My other son is a career army officer to combat tours in Iraq. He did college. He wanted to be a police officer like me, but he became a military police officer instead. And he's very happy. He's got, I believe, 13 years in the U.S. Army now. My daughter is a special needs teacher, works for the Astor Home children. And my other daughter is a daycare instructor down in North Carolina, works with children. She has several degrees in early education. The only thing I'd want to do is, I would never force a child to do anything they did not want to do. If they don't want to go to college, don't go. It's an option, and I would encourage them to go, but like other people have said, we need mechanics, we need plumbers, we need, and it's no shame. I mean, if I didn't go to college, I still was going to be a policeman. And there's no shame. Become a volunteer fireman, become a paid fireman. There's a lot of trades out there, and I'd want the children to do the best they can and try the hardest, but I would never push a child.
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont. Mrs. Miggitts, you will have, you will start off with question five. The New York School District ranking for the Wapenter Central School District the past 10-plus years has declined, meaning our ranking has gone down. We currently rank 304 out of roughly 700 school districts. What do you think has been some of the causes of this decline? And as a potential new board member, what changes or recommendations would you have for the administration to try and correct this decline?
Well, I know that Wapenters is a very diverse community, and we have had an increase in student population in certain subgroups of the community that may have affected this. We have a large immigrant population, so we have new language learners. We also have, if you look at the statistics, an incredibly large special education program in our department. What we need to do is find out the needs of our students and how it is impacting how the district appears to everyone else through the statistics and meet the needs of those students so that they can perform where they need to, not necessarily to make the district look great on standards, but also to make them able to contribute in society in whatever fields they go into. We need to look at our special needs population, and are we truly We need to look at our special needs population and are we truly meeting the needs of the students? Are the students being looked at as individuals and given programs that meet their own individual needs and quality of life outcomes? Or are we trying to filter everyone through this system that Mrs. Torres Henning has pointed out where even special needs students have to go through the five Regents exams to try to earn the Regents diploma? We need to look at our immigrant community and what the needs are of students coming in. Not every student that we have coming in who is not a native English speaker speaks Spanish. Do we have enough resources available for our Asian community, our students who are coming in now from Africa, our students who are coming from the Asian subcontinent? What can we do to meet each of the individual needs of our students so that we can help them succeed in life?
Thank you, Mrs. Miggitts. Mr. Marinaro.
Would you mind repeating the question, please?
I was going to ask. The New York, sorry, the New York State School District ranking for the Wapageas Central School District the past 10-plus years has declined, meaning our ranking has gone down. We currently rank 304 out of roughly 700 districts. What do you think has been some of the causes of this decline? And as a potential new board member, what changes or recommendations would you have for the administration to try and correct this decline?
Well, basically, as I mentioned before, I am a product of the education system. I entered the education system in the early 80s. I loved the way our teachers used to teach them. There was times where I needed extra help and my math teacher used to say to me, come to class a little before. So I used to show up at seven o'clock and she used to spend some time helping me address the issues where I need improvement. As a member of the Board of Trustees, our goal should be to really review the teaching staff. Are they up to the task? And yes, you know, are they qualified to teach? Because many times we blame the children. My kids, when they first entered school, they used to go to a Catholic school. We spent hours and hours and hours helping them do homework. Many times I see that this doesn't happen. The lack of communication between parents and teachers needs to be improved, and I think that the board needs to address that. We really, as board members, need to find out why the lack of improvement in the standards and really address that issue and rectify the problem. I am an immigrant and when I came to this country, I was asked to learn English. I was proud to learn English. English is our mother language. And that should be our first effort. No matter what country you come from, you have to learn the language of the country.
Thank you, Mr. Marinaro. Mrs. Torres Henning, would you like me to repeat the question? The New York State School District ranking for the Wapageas Central School District the past 10-plus years has declined, meaning our ranking has gone down. We currently rank 304 out of roughly 700 districts. What do you think has been some of the causes of this decline? And as a potential new board member, what changes or recommendations would you have for the administration to try to correct this decline?
I can probably speak on the past four, five, six years, maybe not the past 10 years, but it's quite obvious to me in the past four to six years, we've had a decline due to the Common Core standards. And if we stop the Common Core standards, which the State Education Commissioner, Elia, has admitted are flawed by 60 and 55 percent for math and ELA, we can put the brakes on what we're doing and get back to locally developed standards and curriculum that meets the needs of our children. The more we clamp down on kids with this rigor and college and career-ready and tie the teachers' hands because they need to have the kids meeting these standards for tests and then hold the teachers accountable with APPR, the more unhappy they all become. And that means they're less motivated and then they're not enjoying what's going on in school. You know, to me, it's quite simple. Bring back joy to school. That's how you reverse it. Teach the whole child, mind, body, and soul. Stop rigor. Bring back joy.
Thank you, Mrs. Torres Henning. Ms. Ferrara.
Okay, first I want to say from just reviewing, Dr. Elia has recommended that the special needs students no longer have to take the Regents exam. And I believe that was done in June. That's to my knowledge. If I'm wrong, maybe so. But the way I think to improve is to get more parent involvement. There's a lot of different, as I said before, diverse, and a lot of people are afraid to approach us and they feel that, oh, we can't do this because of their fears. But if we were to reach out and I think get them to be and listen with us and understand that we are there for them, that we would help our situation and it would improve. It's the culture and the climate that changes and it's changed. I've been in this, I've been living here over 40 years and I've seen the differences in all the schools, in the high schools, in the community and what happens when they build more houses, when they do more things and more people come in. It's a trust in relationships. That's what we have to get built on so that we can improve what we need to improve. Reaching out from formal meetings is something I feel would work and would help and change the attitude that they're not fearful of us, that they're, hey, you know, we're here for your children. We are here for you. We support the community. And that is really what I'm thinking about. As it was repeated before, offering even tutoring for more reading, for improvement reading would be another thing and another way of reaching out and give it to the parents as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrara. Mr. Beaumont.
Well, you may or may not agree with me, but I think it's a disgrace that we are that low in the state of New York. We should be number one. As a school board member, I would do anything in my power to raise our status towards number one, even if it goes up a couple notches a year. But if we keep on declining, the children aren't being taught, the teachers aren't enjoying themselves. Take the handcuffs off the teachers. Let the teachers go to school and have fun. Let them teach the children. Let them know what the curriculum is, but don't be constantly walking around. I know some of the principals will do it. Leave the teachers alone. Let them do what they have to do, check on them now and then, but let the teachers have freedom, more freedom in the classroom so that they come to work every day, they're happy, the teachers are happy, the children are happy. Everybody will learn. Everybody is happy because, I mean, it's a disgrace that we keep falling backwards. With the amount of money I'm paying in this district, we should have the best teachers possible. And I know many teachers that I know personally are excellent teachers. We may have a few that may need a nudge now and then, but we had a few in my police department that needed a nudge now and then. There's no shame in that. But to be falling down every year, I blame it on the administration, I'll blame it on the school board as well. We all have to get together. It's for the best interest of our children. Let the teachers do their job. Let them be happy, let the children be happy, and then the mother and father be happy. Everybody's happy. Let's try to raise our standards here in this district. Let's get back up, let's come number one.
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont. Mr. Munusami.
There could be a million reasons why our school district's rank is going down. Could that be because the kids are bored at school, because they're not finding it challenged? Or the curriculum is too hard for them, too much homework, and they don't, they may not see the relevance of what they're learning at school to their life and what are they going to take from the school when they get out of school to the real life? There could be a million reasons and how do we solve it? And also, it could be financial, personal reasons why they're not interested in school. Like I said earlier, our AEP enrollment and all those things, the number is very, very low compared to other school districts nationwide or statewide. And it could be, how do we fix this? Like others mentioned here, community awareness. Make them understand this is what is going on in our school district and let them get involved. And also, teachers and parents' involvement is the key here to raise our standards. And also empower the teachers with the education, training. If it's, something has to do with the physics, okay, you know, all right, teach, get some training on the physics to do that. Or if it's, teachers need a counseling, I'm sorry, if a child needs counseling and the teachers need to be equipped to help them out. And also, maybe we can reduce the student-to-teacher ratio, that would help. Maybe one-on-one with the kids, that would help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munusami. Mr. Marinaro, you'll begin question number six. It's the final question. As a board member, you'll be voting and approving policy that will drive the work of administration, allowing them to manage the district effectively. Do you believe that your votes will be based on effective governance and/or effective advocacy and why? I could repeat that if you wish.
Well, I think there will be both. It would be advocacy, it would be listening again to the community and bringing those concerns to the district. Also, listening to administration. I mean, this is, the board is a channel between the school system, the community, and it's a back-and-forth communication system that really allows the whole system to operate like a clock. It is a problem and it becomes an issue for administration to do their job if one of these components is not working in synchrony to allow the process to move smoothly. The community, the community and their concerns are important. Administration needs to know what the community is addressing. And the board is their voice through the meetings. A lot of the board members live in the community and they need to bring those issues to administration, how to improve and facilitate their, really their role in the school system.
Thank you, Mr. Marinaro.
Could you repeat your question?
Certainly. Mrs. Torres Henning. As a board member, you'll be voting and approving policy that will drive the work of administration, allowing them to manage, I'm sorry. As a board member, you'll be voting and approving policy that will drive the work of administration, allowing them to manage the district effectively. Do you believe that your votes will be based on effective governance and/or effective advocacy and why?
I don't know if it has to be between those two choices. I think listening is a huge thing in this district. I think maybe, I think it's been called for before and I think we started a bit by opening up some committees and getting some feedback from committees in that respect, but I think it has to be more. I think we have to open it up to the community and have open forum nights, open mic nights, where there's a back and forth with the entire community. It shouldn't be that the board operates in the little WCSD bubble and discusses amongst themselves what they're going to do. We need to get the feedback from the community and the only way to do that is to open it up to the community. And I know personally how frustrating it is to attend a board meeting and I know it's a public meeting that we're allowed to attend, but to ask a question and not get the feedback. What we really want is a discussion. And whether I'm on that side or I'm on that side, I want to have that discussion with the community, with the board. There are so many concerns out there. The curriculum, the standards, drugs in the school, the LGBT community, there's so much stuff, sports, there's so much stuff going on. And the board needs to facilitate as many of these concerns as possible. But how are they going to know what the concerns are if you're not listening to the constituents in the community? And how are you going to listen to the community if we don't have an opportunity to have a little back and forth? I think we really need to open up.
Thank you, Mrs. Torres Henning. Ms. Ferrara.
Okay, I believe that it is both. When you're voting and approving policy and we discuss things and things are discussed and all things considered, we're talking about the community and having them brought in at least. But really, really important is working with Mr. Carrion and the vision and the mission of the district and keeping that focus. Yes, there are problems. Yes, we have to face them. Yes, you got to work. And there's late nights and there's budget concerns and there's issues. Anti-bullying, how do we keep these things in focus? How do we maintain a good system? It's, in many ways, it's a business, but we need to work together to do this and be able to face the challenges when they come. In all due respect, you have to work and we still have to have the voice, we are the voice of the people and we have to make sure that we listen and hear all sides. But yet, we need to make sure that it is the mission and the vision of the school district for the best of the children. As far as the six ISOLIC standards, for New York State standards for superintendents and for us, for the Board of Education, has to be always, always in focus so that the children get the best education and the high-quality education that they deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrara. Mr. Beaumont.
Well, I believe the school board and any administration should be very transparent. Any phone call should be, or email to a school board member or any administration should be answered in a timely fashion or in person if possible. What you might think is a trivial matter could be a very important matter to a parent. So nothing is trivial to the children in this district. If our administration is not working towards helping our children, get rid of somebody in administration then. Let's get the administration in here that will work towards making us number one. Like I said, it's a disgrace if we keep declining every year. I don't know anybody on the school board except for Paul Colletta, I don't know you. I don't know your backgrounds, I don't know what you do, what you don't do yet, but if I'm selected, I will know. And if I'm not selected, trust me, I will run for full school board next year. Because everything has to be out in the open. When you have a school board meeting here and the parents allow two minutes or three minutes to have talk, well, what do they need, five minutes? Give them the five minutes, you know? If you've got to be here an extra half an hour, be here for an extra half an hour. Like I said, it may be very trivial to you, but it may be very important to them. So, you know, let the teachers, take the handcuffs off the teachers, let the administrators do the job. Let's get our children educated, go back to the three Rs, reading, writing, arithmetic. You know, let's get up to number one and let's take care of our children. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont. Mr. Munusami. Mr. Munusami.
Policy is pretty much their standards and rules and regulations. What's that for? Who is that for? It's for the people. It's for the students. It's for, by whom? By us. We are also, sorry, it's for the students and for the community, and we are representative of the community, and we are their ears and, and their views should be looked at carefully, and, and we should keep the students in mind and make sure the policies are aligned with our statement, mission, Wapender School District mission, goals, and definitely make sure it's in compliance with laws. We can't just come up with a policy and say, "We're going to do, let's do it." And also, make sure they are effective and efficient and get the community involved, basically. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munusami. Mrs. Miggitts.
I believe that any vote on policy decisions should consider both effective governance and effective advocacy. The community entrusts the school board with a great deal of money and a great deal of responsibility. We need to really take things seriously and make sure that those resources are being allocated in the best way, giving our students everything that they need and cutting waste. We also need to realize that we have, while we have a commitment to the students, first of all, and the parents and the community, we also have a responsibility to the, the various people in the employ of the district, and we need to be fair to them in terms of what they're, what is required of them and how they are compensated. We also need to, to advocate, to bring in advocacy for our, for our students and communities. Communication, I go back to over and over again. We need to really communicate, listen to, and engage in dialogue with the community. We need to provide facilities that are safe for our students and are conducive to a good learning environment. We need to get the community involved in our schools. We need to have transparency at the highest level so that people understand what is happening and why. There are always rumors going around in the community about any new change that is proposed, about what's the ulterior motive behind it. We need to be transparent and let people know what changes need to be made and why. And we also need to advocate for quality education of our students, no matter what path they're going on to. We need to prepare them for college, for careers, for the trades, and remember that things have changed, even those going into, into trades need a great deal more training in STEM than their parents and grandparents who went into those trades required. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I want to thank the panel of applicants. I want to thank you for your time, the time here tonight, as well as your willingness to serve as a school board member. Thank you very much for that. Madam President, this concludes the question-answer portion of the interview process.
Thank you. All right, next, Mr. Rubin. All right, whereas the Board of...
Can I say something in a minute?
Okay, now...
Can I just say a little bit? Thank you, people. I would just thank them for coming.
Thank you very much to the interviewees. Before you go, we're delighted that you're, that you all came. It's wonderful to have so many people interested in serving on the Board of Education. We're going now to be going into executive session, and we will be making a decision at the November twenty-eighth board meeting, and you're all welcome to come then and find out our decision when we make it, because we will be making it in public. And so, that concludes the interview process, and I wish you all a very nice evening. Thank you.
We, as the Board of Education, seeks to return to executive session in full compliance with the open meeting law, whereas the open meeting law provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting at which it discusses matters pertaining to personnel, negotiations, and/or litigation. Now be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourns to executive session to discuss matters of personnel, specifically the applicants for board member to fill a vacancy. The Board of Education does not anticipate any further action, and the district clerk is hereby excused.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Mrs. Pelton. Second, Mrs. Karat. All those in favor? Unanimous.